Okay. Well, we'll wait a couple of minutes, just in case people are filing in.
Seven o'clock, it's time to rock.
Anthony, your Grinch looking really scary.
Doesn't he?
So I've seen a lot of really scary, you know, scary Grinch's Grinch portrayals. Yeah, it's very, yeah. But.
Okay, I'm gonna get us started here, it's 7:01 and it looks like we've had, we have 12 people on the call. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Annual notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 6, 2021. In addition, notice of the meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune and emailed to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on December 17, 2021, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Third at Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on December 17, 2021, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As Mayor, I preside over the council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Councilman Hirsch, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? You have a flag there.
Yes, Mayor, the benefits of being at Borough Hall. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America. And the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible.
Indivisible, with liberty.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Burrell-Mittler?
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera? Councilwoman Foster?
Oops.
You're muted.
Sorry, here.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Hale? Councilmember Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Borough Administrator Hovair? I think Emma's sitting in for her.
Yes.
Emma, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Okay. Councilmembers, are there any questions on the agenda for this evening?
No, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, I just have one, I'm sorry. I have one, one quick question. I just wanted to make sure that the Resolution 1221314 out of Finance, this is the Joint Insurance Fund Resolution, that this was, that this is really, that this is the same as, this is the same arrangement as before.
Yes, yes. Okay. Any other questions from council? All right, then we'll move on. I have the distinct honor of issuing proclamations to three longtime volunteers here in Highland Park. Planning Board members, Kim Hammond, Alan Kluger, and Steve Nolan are resigning their positions and moving on to family and life. And we really owe so much to these longtime volunteers. I'd like to read this proclamation that they will each be receiving. Whereas the Borough of Highland Park, as a smaller municipality, is greatly indebted to the hundreds of residents who volunteer on our boards, committees, and commissions, which enable us to address a myriad of important concerns and extend the reach of town. Whereas the borough's volunteer bodies reflect the expertise, interests, and perspective of residents across town, allowing them to investigate proposed local initiatives with optimal attention to community concerns. Whereas the planning board, which meets monthly, is invested with the responsibility of considering local land use proposals and weighing them against New Jersey's statutory concerns, local ordinances, and the expressed interests of residents in the affected areas. Whereas long, three longstanding planning board members, Kim Hammond, Alan Kluger, and Stephen Nolan, have decided to step down to devote more attention to their busy professional roles and to their families. Whereas the Borough is greatly indebted to Kim, Alan, and Steve for their remarkable level of service to Highland Park and has greatly benefited from their extraordinary dedication, deliberateness, and discretion. Now, therefore, I, Gail Burrell-Mittler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, offer Kim, Alan, and Steve the gratitude of the governing body for their exemplary service and wish them much success in their future pursuits. Thank you, Kim, Steve, and Alan. Okay. They have seen so much change in Highland Park over the, I don't know, 20 some odd years that they have been working for our entire community. All right, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular work session held December 7th as distributed?
We'll move.
May I have a second? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster?
Here. Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to our council reports at this time and I'm going to go in the order in which you all appear on my screen. So, Councilwoman Foster, do you have a report?
I guess, Mayor, in real brief, some good news. The burglaries in town, we had a rash of burglaries for a while there. And I'm happy to report that our police department caught, caught the perpetrators and we haven't seen any burglaries since then. And we hope that they'll get a good lesson and stay out of Highland Park. And I'm happy to report that they're continuing their investigation. And another good note, for months and months and months, I've been reporting that we need crossing guards. We are, we have made our goal, our quota is filled, and we have enough crossing guards, so. Thanks to everyone who sent in resumes and made references and all that kind of stuff. And at this point, I'm happy to say we have enough crossing guards to keep our town safe and especially our children safe while crossing the street. That's it, as it pertains to my public safety report, I just want to wish everyone happy holidays, be safe. And I want to thank our fire department as they came out to do the Christmas tree lighting and all the work that they have been doing and playing Santa Claus and everything else like that. So thank you all for all the hard work and dedication and also to our first aid squad, all of public safety, who have been working hard to keep literally all of us safe. The COVID numbers are rising again and we're going to continue to meet and to find ways in which we can keep everyone safe. And I'm just encouraging everyone to do whatever you can to stay safe from this horrible, horrible pandemic. With that said, happy holidays, all the best. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, Mayor, just briefly. As some of you, we discussed some of the residents that were here at the last meeting, we discussed in the work session about the town-wide reevaluation. Again, I like to give the information about our tax assessor, Thomas Mancuso. If you want to request your property record card from him, his, his phone number and email is on the website, preferably email. It's T. Mancuso, M.A., N.C.U.S.O. at hpborough.com. Again, I'd rather prepare our residents for the worst than not prepare them at all. Um, and again, looking forward to a wonderful 2022 with all of our residents and wishing everyone happy holidays.
Thank you, and happy holidays to you too. Councilman Hirsch, do you have a report?
Yes. Let me just permanently unmute you. Spacebar trick. So just some updates from the Recreation Department. Registration, and we really want to get this message out before, you know, before, before the break and before the holiday because before we know it, January will be here and we're beginning up in 2022. My name is Matt Hirsch, I chair the Arts and Recreation Council. Registration is now open for Winter's Rover Soccer Clinic for grades kindergarten through fifth. Rover's International Soccer Camps and Clinics will be running an outdoor winter clinic starting January 9 at 1:30 PM at the Municipal Recreation Complex. It's the track and field over by the high school and middle school. Space is limited, so please sign up now at highlandparkrec.com. And you'll hear me repeat that website multiple times in this report. So hopefully it just gets into your brain. We're also very excited to pair with the Highland Park Public Library on a new class. It's called Science and Stories, and it'll take place at the Highland Park Community Center on Wednesdays, starting January 12 at 2:00 PM. You can also register now at highlandparkrec.com. Space is limited, so please sign up now. Join us for five virtual classes with master teaching artists for grades three through 12, starting on January 6. Learn performing arts skills from professionals in the field. Class topics include improv, choreography, voice, and virtual directing. Registration is due by January 4, and you can do so now. Say it with me at highlandparkrec.com. Registration is open for the Youth Winter Track Club. And this program for grades three through five will start January 9 and run for five sessions at the Municipal Recreation Complex. It'll take place on Sundays from 3:00 to 4:00, and will be run by Coach Evan Rogers-Farmer, who is my middle schooler's track coach. It's very exciting. Work on your speed, agility, and running form with Coach Farmer, and get ready for your spring sports seasons. Register now at highlandparkrec.com. Coach Farmer's amazing, by the way, for anybody who's, who's who, who's considering this. He's really terrific. Other programs that are coming up, and also you can check those out at highlandparkrec.com, are Pocket Park Parties. As you may have noticed, the Borough, working, working with a team of residents, has been, has, has, is, is working on some short-term and long-term improvements to our pocket parks here in town. And we are going to be starting some Pocket Park Parties for ages three through five, starting January 11. Science and STEM classes for ages three through five, starting January 12. And Winter Basketball Clinic for grades three through eight. Registration is not yet available because we are still working out some programmatic details on that. So please stay tuned for updates. You can also register now for our adult winter programming, which space is limited though. Registration before the program starts is mandatory for adult programming. Again, sign up now at highlandparkrec.com. Last week, members of the Community Center enjoyed a holiday outing at the Patare Taverna. They had a special holiday dance performed, courtesy of the Edison High School Dance Ensemble. And the students were excited to spread holiday cheer to our seniors. Just one thing, because I am wearing a piece of flair today, you may have noticed. It says RAC. It stands for Rack on Tour. And this is an amazing non-Borough, but yet very much supported initiative by Alex Dawson and his team to provide a mobile bookmobile and performance space. It's incredible. It's over at the Farmer's Market Lot. Go check it out. It's just an amazing, amazing, amazing invention. It's an invention. And it's right near the Taco Time Machine, and only in Highland Park can we mention the bookmobile and the Taco Time Machine in the same sentence. The Rack on Tour, so Rack on Tour, you may, you may know is, 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 is a project by resident Alex Dawson, who used to own Rack on Tour Books in Touchin many years ago, and has been, and has continued that, that performance legacy by putting on, among other things, Rack on Tour Radio. So on December 22, tomorrow, the Rack on Tour Radio production of A Christmas Carol will take place at 212 Raritan Avenue, the main street building, or next to the main street building. And this event is free and open to the public. It's at 6:30 PM. And we look forward to, to seeing you there. Anybody who's been curious about what's going on with this, with this project, now's your chance to, to check it out. And there are real, it's a real-life bookstore. You can walk in and it's just incredible. So I encourage everyone to check it out. And I am, I just want to point out the earring that I got at the night, at the holiday night market. Do all of your gift shopping locally if you can, and happy with your solstice, everybody.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, Council President George, do you have a report tonight?
I do have a brief report, Mayor, thank you. One of the most important things to announce, it is not final or official until the government, the governor signs the legislation. Highland Park Library was approved for the Round Two Library Construction Bond. You know, we missed out on the first time. We got it this time. The Borough is splitting the, the cost 50/50. The state library grants us a certain amount. We match it through bonding. The proposal was put in, unfortunately, before the, we know that we needed to replace the roof. However, there are roof repairs as well as new bathrooms and substantial upgrades. It is really very successful and it was, the second round was announced with a very brief timeline. Our new executive director at the time, Kate Jaggers, then the board worked very hard to put that together with the cooperation of the Borough. We are waiting for the legislature to finalize the bill for the governor to sign. That looks like it will be taking place fairly soon. It's fabulous news for everybody who uses the library and hopefully expands the usage of the library as we go forward. In Public Works, the RFP for, as you know, council rejected the bids at the recommendation of the administration for water meter replacement. They didn't come in within the range estimated by the engineer. But that's been redone, so we will, despite some of the delay, be moving forward with the water meter replacement, which is a large part of our infrastructure improvements, one of the major first steps that's going to be moving forward. With regard to sustainable Highland Park, Sustainable Highland Park and the Environmental Commission are loosely cooperating to do the background research, most current thought and planning with regard to possible restrictions or limitations on leaf blowers, both as to excessive fumes in the air as well as our noise pollution. It's an interesting project. They were both working independently and suddenly realized they were working on this, different aspects of the same thing. They're going to be cooperating on that, doing extensive research, looking at other ordinances, and also the science has changed. Council will remember, we had addressed this one other time early on when some other towns in Essex County had adopted it. The technology available has advanced quite a lot since then, so our volunteers are doing the research to put something together in the coming year for that. And just want to note also that we, environmental and the Sustainable Highland Park are also working on some of the background, information, DEP connections and restrictions with regard to the Millbrook. The Borough is also working on that and to gather a number of the bits and pieces so that Highland Park, as an administration, as a Borough, can move forward on that. Our volunteers are assisting with some of the background information on that and also working with Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership, which has a lot of information based upon their cleanups and work with the DEP on the Millbrook. So hopefully in 2022, we begin to see that giving us some solid and concrete guidance, not only in some of the areas where we know that we've had severe flooding, but in the other areas that contribute to, to that flooding. And hopefully we can move forward on that. Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Council President. Assistant Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report tonight?
No report, Madam Mayor.
All right, I just have a couple of things I want to share with everyone. If you've been following the latest developments with COVID-19 in our region, you know the news is not good. The headline in yesterday's Star Ledger on December 20 reported, and I quote, "Hospital Cases Climb to an Eight-Month High." The accompanying news story reports that New Jersey had over 6,200 confirmed new positive cases each day on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, which brings us close to the highest one-day recorded total in New Jersey of 6,922 cases on January 13. We also have the highest number of hospitalized patients with confirmed or suspected COVID-19 cases. That's 1,852 since April 23. The CDC's COVID-19 tracker rates rates Middlesex County's community transmission rate in the red or high and states "Everyone in Middlesex County, New Jersey should wear a mask in public indoor settings," end quote. In light of this news and many other troubling indicators, indicators, the Mayor's Wellness Campaign Vaccination Action Team unanimously recommended in a meeting last night that all public settings in Highland Park should require visitors to wear masks whenever they are inside buildings and not eating or drinking. This recommendation includes all of our businesses, houses of worship, schools, and Borough buildings. The Mayor's Wellness Campaign Group, so that you know, includes four respected medical professionals in the fields of infectious diseases and community leaders from the public schools, religious communities, and others. I take their advice very seriously. Accordingly, I call upon all of our businesses, houses of worship, schools, and private associations to institute policies that ask all visitors to their building to wear face masks. I plan to meet with our businesses, spiritual leaders, schools, and community leaders individually in the next two weeks to reiterate this call and urge their personal involvement in keeping our residents safe at a time when COVID-19 cases are rising high and people are more likely to gather in groups. And on a different note, this is our last council meeting of the year. And I want to thank all of the council members, the administration, and our residents for all the work that went into keeping all of our residents safe during this very, very trying year of 2021. Everyone, please continue to stay safe and continue to work with us as we move forward into hopefully a new and brighter new year. Okay. And on that note, I'd like to open up the conversation for our participants tonight. This is now the time for our first public session. Total time allotted is 21 minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items that are on the agenda. If you want to speak on an item that is not listed on the agenda, please do so at the second public comment session later in the meeting. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is 30 seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure everyone has a chance to speak. As a reminder, you may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided, or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. So if you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or select the raise hand button on this Zoom application. And then please press star six to unmute yourself. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your name first and last, as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on the agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now. And Emma, I'm going to rely on you to let me know if we have anyone raising their hand.
You've got it. We have two individuals at the moment. The first is a phone caller that ends in four, 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 five. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, Lois Leving, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, 100 North Second Avenue. Okay, on Agenda Number 19B, your work session, snow removal plan. I just would like to remind and actually inform some of the new council about a Gmail, email from Joan Hollings back in Thursday, December 19, 2013. That was from the meeting which she attended, let's see, yesterday, GSMF, the insurance company, Gordon State, had a presentation on sidewalks. Please review her information to you that talks about on page two, sidewalk law, residential versus commercial sidewalks abutting residential homes. Are the responsibility of the public entity residential owners have no duty to maintain or repair sidewalks. Municipal ordinance, in parentheses, cannot deflect liability from the public entity onto the homeowner. State law trumps municipal ordinance. And residential owner would only be responsible for a dangerous condition that they created, such as negligent repairs, planting a tree, or creating a snowbank, in case this is no information. And, and please also remember that I know you have a group that comes around and we can call them to remove our snow, but the state permits under 40, colon, 65, dash, 12.3 in the statutes, free removal for qualified residential properties, as in senior citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Lois. And Borough Attorney, would you take a look at the, the ordinance that was mentioned regarding the homeowner versus the public entity and the snow removal?
I will, Madam Mayor, I will.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, Mayor, next we have Mary Forsberg.
Mary, please state your name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Hello? Hello, Mary, we can no longer hear you. Now we can.
Okay, I suppose you're probably surprised to hear me under my own name, not under my husband's name, crawl prey. But I have, I have a few questions. One is, of course, about Track D. And I am, I And I sent an Oprah to you guys today or yesterday, and Jennifer sent me back a very nice email and suggested that I ask these questions, some of my questions, directly. So I don't understand why it is proper for the Borough to issue an RFP for private property, which is Jim Paulos' land.
Mary, can I just interrupt you for one second? This public comment session is for anything on the agenda, and I don't know if we're discussing redevelopment on the agenda tonight.
I thought redevelopment was always on the agenda.
No, it's not. And if you'd like to bring it up at the second public discussion, you can feel free to do that. But this portion is only for items on the agenda.
Okay, I'll wait.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Okay, Assistant Borough Administrator, is there anybody else?
No one else with their hand up.
Okay, thank you. Then we will move on. Okay, first, we're going to go through ordinances that require a second reading. And the first one is, Clerk, I'm going to ask you to report on advertising the ordinance amending the Highland Park Borough Code regarding fair share housing, affordable housing, to address the requirements of the New Jersey Superior Court for consideration of passage on final reading by title.
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, and the State of New Jersey amending certain sections of Chapter 86 entitled "Fair Share Affordable Housing" of the Code of the Borough of Highland Park to address the requirements of the New Jersey Supreme Court was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any public hearing, any public discussion?
Yes, there's a caller whose number ends in four, 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 five.
Please identify yourself with your name and address.
Lois, North Second Avenue. Hi, I wonder, I didn't read what this is about. What does this cover? Addressing the requirements, what has changed?
Borough Attorney, do you have the details of the changes?
I do, Madam Mayor. These are clarifications, not really major changes to the ordinance recommended by our Affordable Housing Attorney. One is that the deed restrictions, the stay-on properties, will stay on properties at least 30 years, but also until released by the governing body. There was some question about that with the initial ordinance, and the courts have clarified that the governing body would have to release the restrictions once we hit 30 years. And the other is just to set forth the purposes of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We now collect money when there is a commercial or residential development, and that money goes in the trust account. And then there's a list of items which we can spend it on, such as down payment assistance and other types of affordability assistance. Those are the two elements of this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other public members that would like to speak?
Yes, there's Mary Forsberg.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. I'm actually very curious about this. I know something about Mount Laurel, and I think that affordable housing is a very good and important thing. But two things about it. One is, I guess they pull back all of the potential money that people would have made by owning these things. You buy it at one price, you sell it at the same price, and if it appreciates, you don't get to keep any of that money, or you get to keep a percentage of the appreciated value of your house. The thing that I find sort of unfortunate about this is that you all wrote a, I don't know, a resolution, something that you said to the League of Municipalities in which you basically said that developers should not have to pay prevailing wages to the people that work for them who build these units. And prevailing wages are important because part of the reason that people need affordable housing is that they do not earn salaries that can afford, that allow them to actually purchase property. So it seems a little bit hypocritical to me that, you know, you would be saying we don't need to pay, require our developers to pay prevailing wages, and yet we are promoting affordable housing. It seems just a little bit hypocritical to me.
Okay, thank you. Borough Attorney, you had something you wanted to mention?
Madam Mayor and Mary, I can clarify, the legislation was to exempt 100% affordable developers and nonprofits from having to pay the full prevailing wage. The idea was that if they had to do that, that would have a chilling impact on the ability for those entities that build 100% affordable, or the nonprofits that do that. So that was the purpose of that legislation, and hopefully it passed, because that would really, really hurt the ability to deliver affordable housing. So that was the purpose of that legislation.
Thank you for explaining that to the public, Mr. Schmier.
It's not hypocritical.
Okay. Moving along, is there any other public comment?
No, Mayor.
Okay, then may I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to advertise the ordinance on final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
I know something about Mount Laurel too, and this is consistent and in line with our goals, absolutely, yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, could you please report on advertising the ordinance amending the Highland Park Borough Code pursuant to NJSA 40, colon, 55D, dash, 53 regarding land development performance, maintenance, and related guarantees for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Ordinance amending the Highland Park Borough Code pursuant to NJSA 40, colon, 55D, dash, 53 regarding land development performance, maintenance, and related guarantees was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Thank you. May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Any public hearing?
I do not see any hands, Mayor.
All right, then may I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Okay. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. So may I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 14A through 14I?
So moved.
Motion.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yeah.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the resolution for budget transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Okay, the next resolution we're going to be talking about is a resolution supporting a change to the legislation regarding voter registration, the ability to vote on the same day you register. Twenty other states in the nation already have this as a law, and we are asking the legislature, we would be asking the legislature to approve same-day voter registration if the council votes to support this resolution. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to support same-day voter registration?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to appointments, it is my great honor to appoint Ms. Beth Stevens as alternate number two to our Board of Health. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move into our second public participation portion. Each speaker has three minutes, but may comment on any topic. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and will offer a 30-second warning and then indicate when three minutes has lapsed. The session will have to wrap up by 9:00 PM. So if you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your keypad or select the raise hand button on the Zoom application. Please unmute yourself by pressing star nine, star six, and the Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name, as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on or off the agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now.
All right, Mayor, first we have the phone number ending in four, 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 five.
Okay, Mary, I assume that you...
Hi, Lois Leving at North Second Avenue. Okay, I'm going to start by saying, please, best wishes to all for a healthy new year, most importantly, happy is good. Okay, one, five out of five, North Second Avenue neighbors have no water bill yet, sent out the end of November. Two neighbors that do face Dennison Street had received their bills years ago, weeks ago. Second, the outside light at the DPW Garage Annex on Raritan Avenue was on for one night last week, but like Friday, Thursday, Friday, but not again since then. The redevelopment plan, which page allows for tiny permanent homes, not trailers, for seniors who do not want to share a wall, such as an apartment or condo, and also want a small garden? We heard that everything possible would be in that redevelopment. I couldn't find it. Also redevelopment, New York is considering, or perhaps passed, a law requiring no gas, heating, and, I guess, utilities to structures, I believe it was seven stories or less. What is Highland Park doing to help preserve the air? Are Highland Park's Victorian homes and the 1920s storefronts ever listed with movie-making companies? Like Patterson, we heard about recently, was just used in two Hollywood movies. Years ago, of course, you know, the Corner Confectionery was used for a Mr. Charman commercial. We see that employees receive longevity pay. Why not thank businesses some way, somehow, after 40 years, 30 years? McKinney was here since 1932, left recently. The Rutgers Gun Shop, also from the 40s or 50s, left. Now, Ubris is here since about 58, the Ubris family. Can't we say some way, can't we innovate and say thank you, and maybe other towns will copy? Okay, South Fourth Avenue, between Stop and Shop and Ride-Aid Parking Lot, you desperately need a crosswalk, pedestrian crosswalk installed there. No one, including myself, is going to walk to the corner on 27th. Give me a ticket. Dennison Street at North Fifth, down at the library, has no pedestrian crosswalk, and no one's going to walk to the high school to get into that crosswalk. Please think about Dennison Street, all the tenants coming up. Please ask DOT to respect walking towns. If this is a walking town, can't we force red lights, I mean DOT, for all vehicles at the same time, north, south, east, west, red light for whatever, 20 seconds, 5 seconds, whatever it is, more than 5 seconds, so that the pedestrians can cross in every direction also? I think New York was doing that. And to prevent cars from blocking driveways, which happens not only here on busy North Second, but I hear on the south side too, can homeowners please have permission to paint red on the curb at the apron ramp? You used to allow us to paint our address in the front curb, whatever, or hire someone to paint our number on the curb. Can't we also paint red to stop people from blocking the driveway? That's all. Thank you. Stay well. Thank you. Bye.
Joe, Lois, could you?
Yes.
You were speaking very quickly, and there were a lot of really good thoughts in some of the things that you were mentioning. Would it be possible for you to get me the list of things you just rattled off so that we can address some of them or all of them, and I can get it to the appropriate council person?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else?
Yes, Mayor. Next, we have Mr. Castro.
Okay.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, please state your name and address.
Yes, Marcos Castro, 432 Montgomery. Just a quick question, going back to the COVID-19 topic. And I don't know, I'm not 100% sure this is the purview of the local government, but are there any efforts to expand the vaccination services in town? Because I noticed, as I was trying to get my booster shot, that, you know, the vaccine is not widely available. I know some of the pharmacies in town are doing vaccinations, but their schedules tend to slant towards the daytime hours. There's, you know, weeks-out appointments. And, you know, we basically have to go to other towns to get your vaccines, you know, Edison, Perth Amboy, North Brunswick. I don't know if anything is being done to bring vaccination into town.
So that's a really good question. I can tell you, we have a very dedicated resident, Dr. Norma Bo, who has a vaccination van, which she has had every Friday at the farmer's market. But she has also taken her van to some of our apartment complexes. And what I can do, Mr. Castro, is get in touch with her and see if perhaps, I believe we just had the last farmer's market, Matt? Yeah. See if we can schedule some other times when she might be able to set up for us in the middle of town to help get more people in town more easily vaccinated. I do know the county is also working on a number of vaccination spots, and I'll make sure that we adequately advertise all of the availability. Harry Glazer is our communications person, and we'll make sure that he gets that information out. But I think, I think the first thing we can do is reach out to Norma about getting her vax van. her vax van set up in different locations again in town. Thank you.
Yeah, that would be good. Well, I can't say enough about that band. I think it's a noble effort, the work that they're doing. But I think more needs to be done. And again, you know, it could be that the county has the resources to do that, I'm not sure. But, you know, I think it's necessary for residents.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other residents waiting to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have Mary Forstberg.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi, can you just, Mary, state your name and address again, just for the record?
Mary Forstberg, 317 Dennison Street. So I have questions about Track D. I would like to know why it is legal or appropriate for the borough to issue an RFP for privately-owned land. That's one question. Does, how do you deal with the fact that from rumor Jim Polos has multi-year lease for the Charlie Brown's Blue Horse thing that has the parking lot attached to it? How does that fit into your plans? And has there ever been any agreement to buy Jim Polos's property, for the borough to buy Jim Polos's property on Track D? That's one line of question. I have a question about Woodbridge Avenue corridor that we have gotten a grant that will pay Highland Park over $600,000 over five years. And I'm very curious about this because every time I drive out there to get to Route One, there is a development of 1706, 1710, and 1714 that are very attractive, new, it's new construction, it has a lot of parking, it has been vacant for a number of years now. And I know that it is just down the street from where your business is, Mayor, Mittler. And I'm wondering if you have any understanding of why that property has never been leased. It's good-looking, it's new, it has parking. I mean, those are all the things that people would be looking for. So what's the problem with it?
It is in Edison.
It's in Edison.
Well, it's in Edison. I know you don't control it, but it's much better looking than many of the properties that are available in Highland Park. Why isn't it?
I don't, I really don't have any handle on why they haven't rented it. You know, we're all working very hard to help the businesses in Highland Park. I really haven't spent much time in Edison at all.
But it's just like four places down or three places down from where your business is.
Yeah, I know exactly where it is. I just don't know why they haven't rented it.
But if that property is not rented, why are we really investing $600,000 over five years in Woodbridge Avenue?
Okay, so basically, this is a neighborhood preservation program that the DCA puts together to help communities that have not really had a chance to upgrade over time. That's what this program is all about. But Councilman Hirsch, I saw your hand up.
Oh, yes, I just, I didn't want to, I just didn't want to minimize the economic viability of the Woodbridge Avenue corridor, Marion, because it's, you know, it's access to Route One, but also the fact that it runs right through residential neighborhoods with schools and restaurants and other public amenities makes that corridor a really attractive destination.
Why do we have to do it?
Yeah, obviously. Well, hold on, Carl.
Oops.
Hello, Carl. But the residents, you know, and particularly the residents there, I think feel the need that, you know, this part of town needs to have more attention. I think we can all agree that there is, that this part of town needs to be spotlighted more, whether it comes to tree planting, street improvements, lighting, you know, you name it. But I will say though, I don't want, you know, you can't assume what's going on with that property in Edison. There are several really successful commercial businesses right around there that are doing just fine. So, you know, when you look at vacant properties, don't think it's a market thing necessarily. I mean, there were new brownstones that were vacant on Middle Sixth Avenue in Matouchen for 10 years, and it had nothing to do with the market.
I'm not assuming anything. I'm simply saying that my neighborhood, you want to put a parking garage in front of my house. I would like some kind of investment like trees and nice things in my neighborhood, not a parking garage. And
Oh, this is about your neighborhood, not Woodbridge Avenue?
It's not, it is not just about my neighborhood, but there are those three properties. And if those properties don't rent and they are nice, why are we putting money into
30 seconds.
Into that area?
Councilwoman Foster, I saw your hand up.
Yes, I would like to address that. I have been on this council for umpteen years, and I've lived in town for 28 years. And in 28 years, I can remember only once any kind of improvement was done on Woodbridge Avenue, and that was to help with the overflow and storm sewage.
Sorry.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
While nothing was done, but downtown Highland Park has been beautifully done. The entrance from New Brunswick has been beautifully done. And we have an opportunity now where we have a grant to improve the entrance in from Woodbridge Avenue into Highland Park, and it's a neighborhood that doesn't match with the rest of the downtown, and it's an opportunity to improve that and to take away some of that blight from that neighborhood and make it conform and let people who live on that side of town feel like they are a part of Highland Park, which is important because as everyone liked to say to us, we pay taxes, those people pay taxes too, and they have a vested interest in making sure that their part of town look as good as any other part. So we talk about equity, this is where equity comes in. That's all I would like to say.
And I'd also like to pick up a little bit on that, too. As the councilwoman said, this is a part of town that really has not had the attention that other parts of town have, has had over the years. And this DCA NPP grant also extends, I believe it's a half-block off of Woodbridge Avenue in both directions so that homeowners can take advantage of the possibility of low-interest loans to help improve their buildings as well, which is something that we have not been able to do for the Woodbridge Avenue area as long as I know. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, did you have your hand up?
No, I'm on my
Yeah, catch me.
Council President Phil George.
President.
Yeah, I just wanted to, wanted to follow up with Woodbridge Avenue. You know, I've walked that area almost exclusively during campaigns and at other times. There's a lot going on in Woodbridge. If you take a ride and you do a count, which I do once a month around town in all the commercial districts, Woodbridge Avenue hasn't had the vacancies downtown has. It's thriving, it's jumping. The old McKinney is inhabited, the old Aggie is going over into Edison. There may be a vacancy in that new building. The Acme Auto Body at the corner of Duco's is alive and kicking. There's other custom auto shops going on in there. It's really lively. Sustainable Highland Park is planning to have, if the pandemic allows us, have a reinstitute Earth Day at Carcy Park, which is, you know, of course, it's a graph park now. And it's getting, there's a perfect storm coming together of NPP, of county money, of our requirements to do improvements to DEP, and the planning that we've been pushing for years under the old redevelopment plan as well as the new rehabilitation plan to eliminate the curb cuts to do better, and the entire Woodbridge neighborhood is ready to jump up and be counted. And it's not the same as downtown, you know, it's different. It's got a different vibe. It's auto places, you know, and it's got a good vibe. I used to buy MG parts and sweep the garage at the old MG dealer back in the 60s there. And it's always been the same. It's a great place and a great neighborhood. I hope it helps that
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Business.
For, I do also want to chime in. I think what really deserves this grant, there's been so many new residents that have moved that area as well. And I say this with all respect, as someone that lives on the north side, it's not all about the north side in this town, seriously, Mary. Like, I, it isn't. It isn't all about us.
Oh, it's not, I'm not saying
No, it happens, and I know the north side wants, it happens, it's natural.
I live across the street from where you want to put a parking garage. I am not of the privileged north side, which you're talking about.
We cannot diminish that section of town. We cannot diminish the triangle. We can't continue to neglect them as well.
Okay, let's move on. Emma, is there anyone else that's waiting to speak?
Yes, we have Daniel Stern Cardinal.
Okay, Dan, please state your name and address.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardinal, 221 Harper Street. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hey, just two quick things. First, on vaccines, everyone knows that Rite Aid is in the middle of town, but United Pharmacy is often overlooked for both testing and vaccines, so readily available there if anyone's having trouble finding them. And then also there is a vaccine clinic at Highland Park High School on January 7th from 3:00 to 7:00 PM. The town should definitely advertise that. I'm not sure exactly what size that will be, how many doses will be available, but that should be a sizable event for people who need first doses, second doses, boosters, whatever, whatever you need. The second thing, somebody else mentioned this earlier, the New York City is mandating all-electric construction with no gas hookups for some buildings starting in 2024 and for all buildings starting in 2027. I mentioned this a couple of meetings ago, but that was before New York City passed this ordinance. So just, this should be part of whatever we do going forward with any redevelopment. We should mandate all-electric construction. I mean, we're gonna have to phase out gas infrastructure anyway. It would be more expensive to allow it and then have to retrofit, you know, five, 10, 15 years down the road, more expensive for developers, landlords, residents, everybody. So the smart thing to do is just upfront going forward, all-electric construction on new construction. Anybody who has a gas stove or a gas water heater or anything should not worry. We're not going to like come into your basement and steal it and replace it with an electric one. But like, for new construction, we should, you know, mandate all-electric going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I like that idea. Okay, anybody else?
Yes, Mayor, we have Emily Tennenbaum.
Okay. Emmy, can you state your name and address?
Yes, hello. This is Emily Tennenbaum from 15 Albert Court. I wanted to ask a question in light of the recent pedestrian vehicle accidents on Raritan Avenue. I wanted to find out what is the status of the borough's work with NJDOT on safety and light timing improvements on Raritan Avenue? Has the borough requested any changes from NJDOT? Is NJDOT doing any type of study on the problem or solution? Just wanted to get a status update and find out what the next steps are. Thank you.
Councilwoman Foster, and I don't know if the chief is on the call as well, but Councilwoman Foster.
Yes, chief is on as well. We have, in our Public Safety Committee, we discussed this, and we have NJDOT that's gonna come out. They have been studying the problem, and they're gonna put in some devices to help with the curbing of timing of lights and to the changing of the patterns of traffic turning onto Raritan Avenue. So yes, studies have been done, studies will continue to happen. As I reported a couple of meetings ago, that they are gonna come out and the changes are gonna be made, but it's not gonna be, we're hoping that it will be the early part of next year that we will see the traffic pattern changes happen in that area. And they are continuing to do study on the entire Raritan Avenue area. Chief, you want to jump in and share a little bit more?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. So we've been working with DOT. The first thing we're gonna do is alter the intersection at Fourth and Raritan. So coming from North Fourth, there'll be no left turns on Route 27. So you won't be able to come from North Fourth and turn left towards Edison. That's gonna be our first step. We're gonna continue to see what other things can be done. NJDOT is looking at other intersections and options. Nothing has been decided yet for sure how it's gonna proceed or if anything's gonna proceed, but we're working with them to try to find out what the best options are to keep pedestrians safe and keep traffic moving through the borough.
Thank you. And Councilman Hirsch, I know you've been working with our Safe Walking and Cycling Team. Do you want to comment on this as well?
Sure, Mayor, thank you. And thank you, Emily, for calling in because she attended our last Safe Walking and Cycling Committee meeting where we had a really great discussion about this and received updates from Sergeant Soden and Lieutenant Satchow. And so it was productive. This is, I'm not sure if this is the first, you know, I'm, Emily, as you know, all of the, you know, all of the traffic data was sent to DRT for review. We have not discussed the remedy that Chief Abrams just mentioned, but I think that the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee may have some feedback on that. This is a, you know, it's a, it's a, it would be a quick fix. Obviously does not address, you know, the walkability and safety of our downtown in the long term. But I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other residents waiting to speak?
There's two individuals who have already spoken. Do we have time?
We have, still have time. We have to wrap by 9:00 PM.
Oh, perfect. All right. So our next is the caller ending in 4445.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Lois Loving North Second. Okay, just as a reminder, for those of us who remember Woodbridge Avenue receiving grant money while Councilwoman Joy was on board about 2004 or 2005, she worked to get thousands of dollars to have opened for business, have the businesses specifically along Woodbridge Avenue be fully accessible, have them ramped, have the stairs removed, have the doors widened. And instead, that wasn't done. It was awning time under Merrill. I think it was colorful awnings and discussions of I didn't want yellow, I wanted my black, and I, all these silly advertising awnings and grant programs for community development specifically bar discrimination in state and local government use of federal block grant funds. So when someone with the, when money goes to a business that won't allow the wheelchair user in, which the ADA, as you know, was based on the Civil Rights Act of the 60s, they are told, when they see steps and they're in a wheelchair, they say, we don't want you, not in the front door, the back door, the side door, you are not allowed in our business. So please, whatever you're doing, any funds that can go to the many businesses in the beginning of Woodbridge past the triangle, they need to be accessible. It's sooner or later, you're already 30 years overdue. That's just part of Title III. All businesses must allow or stop discriminating. And the money was there for Woodbridge Avenue. It was misused. Thank you.
So Lois, I just want to be clear that this grant is not going to any individual businesses. It is to improve the overall Woodbridge Avenue corridor and the homes that are off, the streets and the homes that are right off of Woodbridge Avenue. However, that being said, if there are any grants available for us to improve accessibility, whether it's on Woodbridge Avenue or Raritan Avenue for our folks with disabilities, then that is something that I think the council would be very happy to pursue and ensure that it gets used for the proper reasons. To pursue and uh ensure that it gets used for the proper reasons.
Okay, could I say just please let your businesses know that the Internal Revenue Service, our friend um deadline in April usually. They used to have a thirty five thousand dollar annual grant for removal of barriers. As soon as the ADA was passed in nineteen ninety, that was dropped to fifteen thousand per year. And for improvement, and which I think is more than one year if you need such money, funding, they pay about half, they won't pay. And then now it's down to ten thousand, at some point it'll be erased completely, but that's. Uh businesses have that opportunity as and there's something else, some credit for hiring people with disabilities, that's an annual. Deduction, I believe it's called, so please, it's out there, it's just no one ever cares, thank you.
I will definitely share that information with councilman Hale, who has the uh economic development portfolio on council. Councilman Hirsch, you have your hand up.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, Lois, for raising your your concerns, I just, you know, this is just related, I would encourage anybody. Um uh listening to uh take the survey. Uh on the neighborhood preservation program that's available at HPPOR dot com, there's a banner right across the top of the homepage, thank you, Emma. Um uh for uh for 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 providing that link, uh you know, and um and for overseeing the this this program. Uh you know, the the nature of the program through the Department of Community Affairs really requires. Uh community participation and investment, there is a steering committee composed of residents, business owners and other stakeholders in the area. Um and they have been meeting, uh so um uh but all residents can take the survey and talk about their priorities. Uh for for the Woodbridge Avenue. Uh corridor, and that includes accessibility and includes things like you mentioned, uh Lois, mid mid block crosswalks. Um which is very difficult to cross the street on on Woodbridge Avenue, as anybody knows, uh things like um streetscape improvements. Bike racks, bus stops, trees, benches, you name it, uh so take 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 the survey. Because uh we really need to hear feedback there, thank you, mayor.
Thank you for reminding folks about that. Okay.
Mayor, we do have one more individual that would like to speak, it's Mary Forsberg.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi, Mary, just I'm sorry, but just state your name and address again.
Mary Forsberg, three seventeen Denison Street. Um my questions are not necessarily just about me and my house, they are about what is happening in Highland Park. And I have, I asked three questions, one, is it appropriate for Highland Park to issue an I. An RFP for private property, I would like to know the answer to that, I don't think it is. Uh the second one was, what happens if Jim Polos has a multi-year lease and you think you're gonna build a parking garage there? And the third one was, do you have any, have you ever had an agreement with Jim Polos that you're gonna buy his property? I don't think these are like, these are questions that a lot of people in Highland Park want to know, I don't think very many people. Think that a parking garage in the middle of town or any place in Highland Park um is really appropriate. So I would like answers to that, I think that uh that we deserve to know those questions, those answers.
So Mary.
My my my, let me just finish, my, one other off topic thing that I want to say is that. All electric is a really nice kind of thing in the future. But my mother lives, it lived in New Hampshire and she had an all-electric house. And during ice storms, she couldn't cook anything. And her electricity would go off for like days on end, and she she couldn't make hot water, she had an electric stove, she had an electric oven. Uh she couldn't take a shower, and um when Sandy came through, a burrow tree fell on our house and ripped the electric off our house. We were one of the last people to have our electric put back in action, uh like fifteen days. Because we had to wait for the grid to come up and all of this stuff to happen. We had a gas stove, we were lucky, so we could heat water, but I don't think an all-electric um future is is uh like a reasonable and. Good idea. Anyway, so if you can answer my questions, I'd really like to hear what you say about that.
So you had a lot packed in there, Mary, um. Uh borough attorney, I believe one of the questions were were was about um. The redevelopment plan and um going out to bid on different properties. Um I know you're not intimately involved in the redevelopment, that's a separate law firm, but did you want to address that?
Yes, Madam Eric, I can, I mean, I I haven't seen that part of the plan. But if there is a piece of private property, which is integral to the plan or could be integral to the plan. Then you could certainly put an RFP out to study that property, so that having. A a private piece of property studied through an RFP is not unusual as part of an overall redevelopment plan.
So there's the possibility of eminent domain then? If that person does not want to participate.
Well, i- 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 studying a piece of property and then having an individual participate would be two other, two different things, but. Uh I think certainly if you do the study and you see what the possibilities are when added to the other properties uh adjacent to it or in the vicinity. And I can convince someone to participate, so that's why you're allowed to study a private piece of property.
Okay, and um. Mary, the next question you had after the.
Multi-year lease that rumor has that Jim Polos has on uh Charlie Brown's.
I don't know anything about that, um you know, that's a private. I I suppose it's between him and whoever, um but I, you know, I can't comment on that at all, I know nothing about it.
And the third one was, has there ever been an agreement to buy Jim Polos's property? Now or in the future?
Not that I'm aware of, um borough attorney. I see you nodding.
No, no, Madam Eric, I I there certainly is no current agreement, and there have been none, my knowledge, in the last ten years or so, so the answer would be no.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate getting answers.
Okay. Um, all right, is there anyone else, um assistant borough administrator?
There's no more hands, mayor.
Okay, then um. We will be moving into our work session, council members, do you need a five-minute break or do you want to go straight into work session?
I disappeared for a second, but I'll come back.
You you want to take a break, is that what I'm hearing? Folks, all in favor of a break?
Session.
We should move straight through, yeah, yeah. I may walk away.
Okay.
There's only two items, right?
Yes.
That's all, and they're short.
Yes, and there's no exact session today. Okay, work session items, um. First, parking regulation amendment for Lincoln Avenue Wayside Drive, uh Phil, are you taking that one tonight?
Uh yes, Your Honor, uh 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 along with uh Chief Abrams who was here. Uh and the the chief, uh the discussion was with public safety. Uh uh with Ms. Javier. Uh with regard to Lincoln Avenue, this is the part between Raritan and up to Walter, which is one way. Uh the recommendation was uh and and uh councilwoman Foster. Council uh Chief Abrams can correct me if I'm wrong, but uh was to change it to parking on both sides to allow. Uh some easing of par- uh parking in that area as well as traffic flow, the traffic studies. Uh the chief advised us showed that our emergency vehicles can pass through. Um there is enough room to do that, it would greatly improve parking in that particular area. Uh and and the studies that the police department did show that is. Uh the traffic that accesses that route is from the left lane of. Coming off the bridge on Raritan, uh off the bridge across the Raritan out of New Brunswick. Uh that traffic generally comes up that way to access Lincoln. Um and that uh the parking in the area will greatly add the residence and not impede that flow of traffic. And uh all emergency vehicles have been tested and fit through there. So that the recommendation is let uh uh pass it or it would have to be done by ordinance to allow parking on both sides. The uh other street is Wayside, that's in the crossings. Um the at the outlet of uh everyone knows is right near the bridge is one is going. Uh out of town on Raritan towards Cedar. DPW has suggested, and this is part of actually part of the next item on the agenda, uh snow removal. Uh we found that it was uh very accessible in most of the areas with our smaller trucks, which we started to. Use the smaller mason dumps and the large pickups. Um can service that area, you know, especially the dead ends very well. But that it was difficult to get the larger trucks to do wayside, which is the main road through there. Uh without uh making a a uh the recommendation was to make the north side, which is the side closest to the tracks. Um opposite the single-family homes with driveways, to make that no parking during snow events. So that the trucks can get through there, get wayside cleaned very quickly and get the side roads cleaned much quicker. Um so the recommendation uh coming out of Public Safety and Public Works both is to. Uh and uh make the same amendment to the ordinance to make the uh make that no parking during snow events uh as we have in other areas. Um and that's the recommendation with regard to the parking uh regulations. Uh with regard to the snow ru- removal plan.
Uh uh councilman, council president, can I ask a question before you move on?
I'm sorry, sure, mayor.
Um on the no parking signage, have we gotten input from any of the residents who live in that area?
That's gonna be the next step, I believe there's been some discussions, I know that um superintendent Mike had talked to me a about that. Um I don't know how much has been done, uh we'll try and find out. Before the next Public Works meeting, which wouldn't be till third week in January, get you an answer for that. To bring up, maybe not at reorganization, but at the first meeting, regular meeting in January.
Okay, thank you, go on, I'm sorry I interrupted you.
Uh snow removal, today is the first day of winter, today is the winter solstice. Public Works and I wish everybody a safe snow month, that snow season. Uh and and health and and success to all of you, the snow removal plan is is actually a policy that. Um some of the ordinance changes um that needed to be done that came out of Public Works and Public Safety. Uh was primarily under Public Safety uh with the hands-on work of Councilman Hirsch. And and uh councilwoman Cattivera on the public work side, putting together the snow removal plan. It is actually, it's a manual uh for uh Public Works. Um it includes a a twenty-page appendix of the prop of mixing the brides. Uh for, you know, we do the briding for the roads that it sets out the the uh snow levels when uh. Uh DPW activates and when the police department uh is. Uh can activate emergency measures, it's very thoroughly done. Uh Ms. Javier and and Superintendent Mike put a lot of work into that. The final draft was delivered to Public Works at its meeting last week uh for one final read-through. Uh Ms. Van Thune did a commentary on it. Uh and I did some of the the cleanup work in attaching the ordinances as appropriate. We have enacted the um ordinance changes for um. Uh accessible parking, which were part and parcel of that plan to make sure that they're cleared. Uh we had a lot of problems with that during the major snow event. Uh this is not just keyed to that kind of a twenty-inch at snow in twelve hours. Um it addresses when the crews activate. Which was kind of a general guideline and it's also some, to some extent, state regulation. But it puts it in one place at one time for all of Highland Park to refer, um it will, I I. Um believe in it, I'd have to talk to Terry when she's available, we'll have it up on the uh borough website so that everybody has access to it again. It's a technical, technical manual, uh but it's there for everybody to see and uh. I I know that it was um eight weeks late, but um you know, there were some problems with the. Meetings during the pandemic and some of our meetings got stormed out in Public Works unfortunately. Uh but we did get it a cargo was before the end of the year, um so we just made the deadline of the first day of winter.
Thank you. I know there was a lot of work that went into that, so please uh give our thanks to the Department of Public Works.
There was all, I I I I I'm going to speak again to Councilman Hirschen, uh Councilwoman Cattivera. Um this was a very hands-on project and we did it in a little different way, we divided things up. Each one of us took one of the policy pieces that had to go behind this and and underpin it. And worked substantially on that, got out on the street, walked the area, talked to people. Uh you know, looked looked at photographs during the snowstorm. Um I went through my interviews and photographs of people when we were actually out on the street shoveling. Which Matt and I did, uh and share sharing that experience, it was a very hands-on, it was a slightly different way for council to work. Um and then work with administration to put all those pieces together and. And to review their pieces because they're they're in charge of the technical and administrative then. Uh with their employees, but it worked very, very well, and it generated what I think is an excellent plan.
Thank you. Okay, um. That is the end of our agenda for this evening, may uh I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Happy holidays, move into adjourn.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Everyone.
Christmas, Kwanzaa and New Year's, be well and be safe.
Happy holidays.
Good night, everyone.
Bye, everyone.
In twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.